We're gonna go ahead and get started. I've asked the mayor, if he would, to open us up in prayer. So if everybody would stand.
Hi, Mr. President. Heavenly Father, thank you for this beautiful day. Thank you for the crowdedness of come today to help us to govern in a manner that would be pleasing and to your side. We ask that you give us the wisdom to do the things that are best for this community. We ask your blessings upon everybody that's here, every home that's represented, and be with us tonight during the fireworks when we may have a safe and enjoyable time. Christ name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Everybody with the flag, attention, salute, pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, I'd like to welcome everybody to our council meeting today. Has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes from? They got a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, since we didn't have a meeting, the last second meeting last month, we need to approve the bills. Have you got a motion, second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. All right, we will move right along on our agenda. We had a public hearing to receive comments on the proposed rezoning of 7.5 acres on Godfrey Avenue, just north of Beeson Gap. I think the planning commission met on that.
The planning commission approved. It's been run twice in the newspaper as required by law. Anyone here to address it?
Anyone here at all to address the rezoning of Godfrey Avenue?
Motion to close.
Close.
Got a motion to close?
Second.
Got a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Any committee reports? Do we have anybody on the committee reports?
You and I met with Robin.
Yeah.
Kinda just spoke about some stuff. I know the swing.
Yeah, the swing set will be going out on Friday, the 12th.
And everything's ready for the fireworks tonight and so.
They're setting fireworks up right now.
They're setting fireworks up right now, so. Anybody else?
We might, Tim might mention about the public works building. You've got the information on as far as the bidding process?
Yes, I talked to him this morning and he's gonna have plans ready either today or tomorrow afternoon, so we'll go ahead and run some plans for contract or plans if they come in.
All right, ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance 2019-02, rezoning property as discussed in the public hearing above, which is the 7.5 acres on Godfrey Avenue.
Both suspend rules and adopt today?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion to suspend the rules in the second. Johnny?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Motion to adopt.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. Okay, we have resolution 2019-26 informing the Alabama Department of Environmental Management of actions taken by the city to meet the requirements of the wastewater treatment plant permit.
This is something that's been brought to Robin's attention. They simply need a resolution stating that we are going to do what we said we were gonna do to upgrade the treatment plant. Process now.
Motion to approve.
They got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Resolution 2019-27 granting tax abatements to Alabama Wholesale Socks Incorporated. Any?
The podium's backwards.
Well, I think it's been turned around, so. Turn the microphone around.
We asked him never to look that way.
This is a tax abatement, Tommy Ebbin. Y'all may know him or heard of him. I know Chief Ebbin. He has started his business, Alabama Wholesale Socks, and he's been in the business quite a while. He's already made some significant investments purchasing a building and other things, but he has ordered to add some more equipment. That's what this abatement is, just for the equipment. And the city taxes that we've paid $2,450 and estimated tax savings on the county, the property taxes, be $1,787.
$1,000 total to property and sales tax.
$250,000 invested. And he will be adding, he currently has three full-time, three part-time employees. With the new equipment, will add an additional five employees over the next 12 months.
In order to just build.
It's located up there for road.
Just go Rover's Gate, Jerry Porter Rover's Gate.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second to adopt. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried.
Hey, I'm telling you, you got the resolution.
Okay, new business. This Friday, or this Thursday is July the 4th. The state has declared, and also the county has declared, to make July the 5th a city holiday. That would mean their workers are off Thursday and Friday. And I believe it's a general consensus of this council to do the same for the city, to where we would give a two-day holiday. July 1st.
Well, let me just say this on this, being a veteran myself, you know, I'm kinda partial to, you know, recognizing the veterans. And I think it would be a good gesture to let the city employees off as long as, you know, the state and county already letting their employees off. Do we have a motion? If not, I'll make it.
A motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried.
Thank y'all. I'll be sure to pass that along to the city employees.
Okay, we got to authorize the request for bids for the new public works building.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to request bids for the public works building. Any other discussion? Johnny and Lynn. All in favor, say aye.
Uh-uh.
Any opposed? Okay. We also have authorizing the purchase of brick pavers for the Patriots Park. This would be the city buying the blank pavers to go in the park to be replaced as the engraved pavers are put in, in place. Those pavers would come back to the city.
These are going in the Walk of Fame, or whatever you wanna call it there, going from Godfrey into where the monuments are gonna be. They've ordered the blanks, 300 and something plus of those, but they can't be installed until you have enough to put it all in and lock them together. So the city would be buying the, all the blanks to fill in the deal. And then as those come out, we would get them back in our possession and then we can put them downtown as we fix sidewalks and put these pavers in there. So I'd make the motion, go ahead and authorize that purchase.
What's the purchase price?
It's $14,800 and something dollars. We've already got the invoice.
14,480.
14,480, yeah. And they were good with the, the invoice was sent just for giving us a number. They expect that they won't be paid till they're delivered, which should be in the next couple of weeks.
I'll second.
And we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carried. And I would like to tell everybody, if you've not bought a paver and you would like to do that, you can still do that. I think the mayor has some of the forms in his office. You can go by the VFW and get those forms.
Let's go after his office also.
So.
And that can be an honor or memorial, any one.
Right.
Doesn't have to be a veteran. They're great, but.
Do we have a timeframe of anything, when do you start putting them in?
Soon as they all come in, then they can be put within the end of this month, if all of them come in together, they should be able to put them in. The blanks will get here ahead of the engraved ones, a week or two. Tyler told me the other day that he expected 60 days from time they were ordered, and they've been ordered for a few weeks. So hopefully by, maybe August, they'll all come in and then they're gonna put them in sections like World War I and then World War II, and then on up toward the monument there. So everybody will kinda have a section to look for their people. And then the actual monuments haven't been ordered yet. Soon as they raise some more money, that'll be the next phase. And then the actual monuments that go on the circles will be the last thing put in. B benches are also available, and they've got some literature out now that actually show you the pictures of the benches, and they're selling some of those, so those will be put in this fall, so.
And that's to all raise money for the monuments, correct?
Right, right.
So the, all these pavers and the benches, all that money will go straight to the property.
I think it's going to the park itself, and we hope to have it finished. It would be nice to be able to dedicate it next Memorial Day. That's kinda the goal, if we can get it done next Memorial Day in the spring, have it finished and dedicated.
I'd just like to thank everybody involved with the city that's worked on that. You know, when we first started our administration, it looked like it was never gonna get done. And I just thank each of y'all that's worked so hard.
It stalled out for about four years.
Yeah, it did.
Tim Kriv had done an outstanding job with the grave work. We've had some local businesses that came in and did sprinkler systems, and we've had a landscaping company that's offered to come in and do some landscaping, since the other one did the sprinkler system, the water department. All the utilities worked in there. Buck and them have done a lot of work on the form, and it's been a labor of love for a lot of people, but it's gonna be really nice when we get done.
Well, and I don't think it would've gotten done had we not stepped in, and I'm just so thankful.
We're good there.
I'd like to ask newspapers, maybe run another little ad or something that reminds people how to get in touch with somebody. I still see people that wanted to buy brick, but they don't really know how.
Right.
Well, and there was a website. There was a website that you could go online and actually order.
Charles Stevens has taken over as chairman of the committee this year from Tyler. Tyler got it up to this point in the last two years, really working hard, but his job's kinda taking more his time, and Charles, being involved with the VFW, has agreed to take that on and try to get it finished in one more year. So that's the goal, is to finish it and have it dedicated next spring. You know, we've got some of the pamphlets, we can have them here at City Hall. They're in several businesses around town, but anybody has a question, then contact somebody here and we'll get you some information on how to get that, because that's, that's what's fun, and it's purely selling pavers and donations.
All right, moving right along, we got to authorize the 2019 painting list. He's got your list right there in front of you.
Approved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Donnie, did you have something to say?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that we're gonna have some spots that we're actually gonna patch right now, and that's up to Tim to kinda find them and fix them, but we got some cuts and we got some things that need to be addressed. We're hoping maybe to get some state help, maybe next year, year after, on some of the roads, so that's real bad.
And Godfrey Avenue's gonna get paved early. The work that's been done over there was necessary to get the manholes up to the height, but it's like a ski mobile now going down through there. You have to kinda be careful how you're driving, but Godfrey Avenue's gonna get paved pretty soon now, and.
Well, and Galt Avenue, I know people keep talking about Galt Avenue, and it's actually not our responsibility, it's the state, so.
We're working on that, we hope.
Yes.
I wanna say it's not only not your responsibility, if you wanted to pave it, you couldn't.
Right.
Did we approve that? We had a motion, second. Okay. All right, next is board appointment for the Fort Payne Water Board. Tony Dobbs has been on that board for one term. His term expires July the 18th, and as I said, he's only served one term.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to read with Tony. All in favor, say aye.
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 I think it's just important to keep people on there more than one term because of the knowledge they have.
Tony does a really good job.
That's good.
Yes.
Board compared to some of the.
Right.
Well, he's done, as a lawyer for the board, I appreciate you putting him back on. He's, along with Red and Wade, they've done an outstanding job down there. It operates smoothly, appreciate you putting him back on.
And we have two activity permits. First one is for Fort Payne Main Street fundraiser, the Latino Festival at the Rotary Pavilion, Saturday, August the 3rd, from 3:00 to 9:00. And then Judy Gass fundraiser for the Alabama Shelters and Rescue, Alabama Walking Park, July the 6th, from 10:00 to 2:00.
I'd like to tend to, for y'all to approve the Judy Gass thing. I think she's moved that up to the rec center, and I won't say, I think the date's wrong, but we need to call her and make absolutely sure, because I think she told me she didn't wanna do it back over at the walking park anymore. So if y'all. If y'all go ahead and tend to approve it. I think the times are a little bit different from what we normally do too, so we'll contact her and make sure.
Regardless, he don't have a problem.
No, we've done it in the past, yes.
Got a motion, second, to approve both activities. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next we have discussion about Glenwood Cemetery, the rules and regulations. I know that we've had some discussion past weeks about the rules and the regulations at the cemetery. Anybody?
Red and Johnny are on public works, and Johnny and I are on buildings and grounds. So in the spirit of following the law, we didn't all three meet together, but Red and Johnny have got together, and Johnny and I have got together. And I think we've come up with a, hopefully, a plan for future endeavors down there. Couple of weeks ago, the young man running the cemetery, who's just been there a few months, removed a bunch of pots and flowers that were on the ground in front of the tombstones in order to try to get the mowing back in cycle. In doing so, it upset quite a few people, and I understand how that upset some people, because it was done with no knowledge beforehand it was gonna be done. The flowers weren't thrown away, they were put in a dump truck, parked up at the shop, and a lot of them, people came and got them once they figured out what was gone. But nothing malicious was done, no intent to harm anybody or make anybody mad, it was just basically a maintenance issue. But in dealing with that and talking with several people, we've tried to figure out how to not let that happen again and upset people, because there is tremendous amount of passion and emotion involved with the cemetery. It's 26 acres, over 6,000 graves, and it takes 120 hours to mow and weed eat that cemetery one time. We've got two full-time people down there and part-time people as necessary. So in trying to get it where they can maintain it and keep it looking as good as it looks right now, and I think it looks better than it's looked in years, this was all basically a maintenance issue. So in trying to get this where it doesn't happen again, we kinda looked at some options, and Tim has agreed that they can put a fenced-in area up behind the maintenance shop. Anything that's removed from a grave will be placed there. You can go up there and get it back if you want it. We wanna be able to let people do their decoration flowers in May. But in this case, Father's Day was six weeks later, and some flowers were put on graves on Father's Day that were taken up the next week, so we don't want that to happen. And so what we looked at is, if you go down there and look down the rows of the headstones, if people want to put something there, and there's quite a few shepherd's hooks and things like that, but if you wanna put something by a headstone, if you will put it in line with the headstone at the end instead of in front of it, then that's not a mowing issue, either behind or in front of the marker. It's a weed eating issue, but they have to weed eat them anyway. So as long as everybody understands they mow, and then they come back and trim, and if you have to get off a mower 65 times and move a pot and mow and get back on and go on, that 120 hours increases quite a bit. So we're gonna basically get with the folks at the cemetery. If you've got a question, go get with the manager down there, and he will show you what will work best and how it will work and not have an issue in the future. Then we would like to have some temporary signs made. If there's gonna be a mass cleaning or removal or something like that, we will put several of those around the cemetery. Flowers or whatever will be removed from the ground, just the ground in front of the markers, by a certain date, and then you'll know where they are and you can collect. So that should eliminate the confusion factor there. But there was no ill intent, nobody stole anything, nobody took saddles off of monuments, the saddles that were collected were already on the ground where they had blown off. So I hope everybody understands that this is not anything that the city did as a malicious thing. It was just a poor communicated deal. And we want nobody to think that we're stealing flowers. There are flowers stolen down there every time you turn around. We had people stealing flowers the night before decoration. That's the sad reality of it. And then they go out here and sell them. But we're gonna try to do this in a, in a manner that will be respectful, but also let us be able to maintain the cemetery and keep it as pristine as it is right now. Randall has done a great job, and I'm sorry that he was beat up a little bit on Facebook, but Facebook is just an area that people go to communicate, and I watch it, but I don't get on there and communicate. But I've had dozens of people get ahold of me since this happened to tell me that they're proud of the job that Randall's doing, and please don't y'all do anything to that boy down there. He's doing a good job, and we appreciate what he's doing. So I'm sorry personally, if anybody got offended by that. I've got a lot of friends buried down there. I go down there every week. I've been doing that for years, relative. We've dealt with a lot of stuff over the years, and I go visit the dead to remember the living sometimes. But we have people that go to that cemetery every day to visit with their loved ones, some every week, some once a month, whatever. And Randall has introduced himself to those people in the short time he's been there, and has heard their story and knows who they're coming to see, and he's interacting with those people, and they love him to death. So if you are offended, I'm sorry. Try to get with Randall, and we'll try to make this right, but nothing was done out of ill spirit or ill will or in a vindictive manner. It's just strictly him trying to keep it as good as he can, where everybody would be proud of the cemetery. So if we can make this work, that's what we're looking for. As far as the graves themselves, the new graves, our policy's been for years that after one week, the flowers come off. And Randall has even taken it upon himself that now when they dig a grave, they take that dirt and they go dump it and use it for fill somewhere, because it's, it's not good dirt down there. It's been filled, it's churped. He fills those graves with dirt, topsoil, and he packs them, and he waits one more week, and then he puts Bermuda soil on them. We started that three years ago. So the cemetery is getting fixed. It's looking good, and if you have a problem with the grave, get with Randall, and he will try to fix it as soon as he possibly can. He keeps a notebook all the time. And when John Arden, the other day, a lady came up and got me in the car and rubbed me down her husband's grave, and she's a friend of mine, and she had an issue with, the monument was washing out on the front there, and we got that taken care of that day. Randall wrote it down, he's gonna fix it. Things like that are so personal to people, I understand, and all y'all do too. You've got friends down there, your dad's buried down there, a good friend to all of us, we all got friends and family down there, but we're adding about 100 people a year to that cemetery. And every time you bury someone down there, that's four hours out of the work crew having to deal with that grave that they can't mow and trim. So just kinda be patient with us, and if you still got an issue, then I'd be glad to listen to you, but we're trying to do the best we can.
Well, and my dad's flowers were taken too, so I didn't get any favoritism there. But I just wonder if we couldn't get with the funeral homes and ask them when they do bury someone there, and our cemetery to hand out these rules? Just because if you, if you give it to them when you sell a lot or whatever, I'm not gonna remember, especially if someone's just passed away. But I think if we were able to hand these to anyone when they are put there, that, you know, they would, it'd be more likely to be followed and understood and kinda keep that communication open.
We need to do that too when we sell the lots, and we haven't been doing that, so.
Or both times.
We can provide, that's just a matter of making copies and giving to funeral homes, but that would be a good reminder. But there are two signs down there, we may need some more, but there are two signs down there, they've been down there for years, that have the basic rules on it. Not all of them are on there, but the ones that pertain mostly to the, to the groundskeeping are there. And I think 2006, last time, those were updated. So they've been there several years, but there's just two of them, one's down there by the little shelter, and one's up there right off of where you come into Alabama Avenue and turn right, so.
We might put them where they're a little more visible.
Yeah, but we really don't wanna put signs on our cemetery. They're where you can find them.
On the perimeter, not on.
Yeah, right.
Maybe.
Nobody wants a big sign of the rules in front of their loved ones' family plot.
I'd just like the public to know and to realize, you know, we sitting up here, we have to look at both sides of every issue, and we have to look at both sides of this. And, you know, we wanna do what's best for you as our citizens, and we wanna do what's best for us as the city to bring that together to medium ground. And we got to, you know, we gotta handle these things. And when you're dealing with it, with that, because that is a very, very tender subject when you're talking about, you know, I'd be mad if I went down there and my loved one's flowers was gone, that I spent hundreds of dollars on. I totally understand that. And we want the best resolve for everybody involved.
And too, you mentioned that you've gotta look at both sides of it. I don't know whether everybody understands how much money is actually spent to keep that cemetery going. We'll lose this year about $75,000 above what we take in. And it's, that's a ongoing process, and it gets, at the rate we're going, every year it will be more, because it's just the more graves you have, the more work it takes. And I'll be honest with you, the way Tim and them's doing it right now, they're doing it mighty good for the number of people they've got. And we can keep that up for a while, we can't keep that up forever.
I'd just like to make a suggestion. I am sure it's not a requirement, it won't be, but if we fix that fence in Avery up there, where you're talking about to put the flowers that are taken off or picked up off the ground, you know, if, if people put the flowers out, or just put their name on the back of it somewhere and other where it's not visible from the front, but just on the back of it or something, that way they could be identified and the people could find them better when they come down looking for their flowers, and I think it would just cut down some of the confusion.
And that would even be good for the, for the saddle pieces, if they'll put, you know, your name somewhere on there. That, because the wind, you know, the wind will blow those things a lot of times, and then when they find them out in the, you know, woods or wherever, then they don't know where those flowers came from. So if you've got some, if you tag them somehow with your name or something, you can look and see when you go down there.
And let me just say this, it's sad that this happens. People stayed at flowers, but it's not only here. My parents are buried out on San Mountain at Fairview, and we put flowers on their grave the first Sunday of May. They stayed there less than a week and someone got them. So, and I'm sorry, but it happens.
Do we wanna look at changing these rules as they are written at present time?
Well, I think there were some people here that wanted to maybe address.
Is anybody here that would like to come and address the council on this issue?
I mean, it's not that I want to address the council on the issue necessarily, I just have a couple of questions. My main question is, my father does not have a marker yet. He's been buried there for a year, but it's because my mom. But it's because my mom, it's by getting a marker, it makes it real for, for her. And she's, that's, that's hard. And so in the process of waiting on a marker, of course, he's got lots of people who love him. And he's constantly having flowers brought up to the marker. Is he not allowed to have flowers on his marker? I mean, is that what I'm being told, that after decoration, he's no longer allowed to have flowers?
What we've looked at is trying to keep them in the mowing lot. If there's not a marker, there is a temporary marker.
There is, and they mowed, it looked like they mowed over, like they took it up and mowed it. You know, mowed it and it looked great. And I'm not complaining. I think that he has done a great job on the, on the cemetery. I just, I just think for people who, who, who don't have markers yet, you know, it's still their freshest days.
Right, I understand that. I've got a good friend that it was hard for him to put his daughter's marker up.
Right.
I mean, it took him a while and, and I hope I never had to deal with that.
That's, you know.
I understand exactly what you're saying.
So I think that for my mom, she had something that was very heavy that wouldn't blow away. It was quite heavy when I loaded it into the trunk, when I found it on the back of the truck. And, you know, it was, it was pretty upsetting to her. She cried when I called her about it. And, and it was in line with the, the, with, with the, the other monuments. And I'd just like to know what the rules.
I think the best thing that, that I would do is I'd just go see Randall. Randall gets familiar.
We had this conversation and I think Randall would be able to tell you, if you want to put that somewhere, put it right here and I'll take care of that. And that will take care of that from now on.
These type of cases is not gonna be like hundreds, you know. He'll, he'll get to know you and the family.
Everything down there is an individual deal.
Well, and there's so many. I know that there's no way possible to keep up with, there's no way to know when thirty days is up.
Right.
You know, there are too many graves, it's a huge graveyard. But, and because of that, I think that there needs to be some kind of latency on that too. I think that maybe when the, I know that it's really hard to come up with solutions that are good for everybody. But maybe, you know, maybe we don't remove the, the flowers unless they look ready. I think that could be something that.
That don't work good either.
Some people, ready's not our ready, but I understand.
You know, I know when I took that video, those flowers were synchronized.
Yeah, oh, there were some nice ones there.
They were synchronized and also all the flowers that were on my dad's grave were not in the back of that truck. So, and they had just been put on there.
That's, that's a problem.
They weren't all in the back of the truck.
Yeah, I've, I've got a relative that had some that went on Father's Day and they were gone Tuesday.
Well, yeah.
And we didn't get them.
Right.
Somebody stole them Tuesday after Father's Day.
I don't know what all was in the back of the truck, but I do know that, that there were a lot of nice ones.
Yeah.
That's a lot.
And a lot of them are still there and people haven't got them. And a lot of people have just, they're, they're not gonna go back and forth with it and I understand that. But if anybody's got anybody after this, I'm sure this is gonna be in the paper and whatnot. But if anybody's got any that they're missing, they're still down there in the truck and he hadn't done anything with them yet, but.
Well, that's what started this whole thing was, you know, hey, people, you're missing flowers where they are.
Yeah.
Because, you know, it's just, it's just one of those things where we, I know you guys are losing money, but hey.
Well, that's part of it. We lose money on a lot of things.
We're all losing money too.
That cemetery is always gonna be maintained if any of us have a say in it. It's, it's the lifeblood of this town to keep our heritage going and take care of that.
Now, I think the fence in there, well, how else would put them in?
How would we keep people from stealing from?
Well, it's gonna be under camera surveillance. And we're not gonna leave it open all the time, but we're gonna, we're basically gonna put them in a secure area under surveillance. And then if you, if you can get, and if you go up there at four o'clock in the afternoon, unless they're burying somebody, they're not there. Because they're there at six o'clock in the morning or earlier, trying to get going. So by two o'clock, they're usually gone. So if you can coordinate, leave a note up there, a phone number, and they will get back with you. And Randall is gonna be very conscious of dealing with people on an individual basis from here on out. And he, he's upset, I mean, he nearly quit over this. He was so upset that he hurts many people's feelings.
I was gonna say, he was affected deeply by this as well.
He took a few days off to just step back and get away from it.
And he meant no ill to anybody.
He doesn't have a mean bone in his body.
I've been talking to his wife a lot, so.
He has not a mean bone in his body. He's doing a great job. We're gonna try to make this work. And if there's a glitch, Tim, as his boss, Public Works, is over the cemetery. Randall works for him. And out of forty-two people, Randall's the only guy that agreed to take this job. It, it comes with a heavy burden. There's a lot of weekend work, a lot of after-hours work. And then you still have to keep the cemetery going. So they do a great job and, and I applaud them for that. But I apologize for everything that happened. But there was no ill intent and we want to try to make this work. And we'll try to make it more personable from here on out.
Well, and maybe label them like Red said, if you could, some way so that you can claim them. You know, not that that can't be taken off, but.
It'd be a lot easier.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I see what you're, you're concerned about thirty days. And you're right, there's absolutely no way you can remember this was put on two months ago and this was put on a month ago, what have you. That, that, that does create a problem. And that's, that part of it is very hard to do. Shepherd's hooks, hanging baskets, urns that are actually mounted on the, the headstone, they can stay there forever. I mean, they're not in your way. It doesn't, it doesn't bother mowing or anything. What's on the ground is what's really on the way. And if we can determine where we want to put those on the ground and leave them, then that, and that's what you're talking about basically.
That's what we were looking at was, we had a well-known lawyer here in Pines West several years ago and he had a concrete urn on the ground in front of it. It was the only one in a whole row, four hundred feet long. So they had to either mow around it or move it, mow, put it back. So it was moved and in talking with his wife, she agreed, we can put it on the end of the monument in the mowing row and, and leave it there. And then it's just a matter of weed eating around it, just like you would the end of the monument. So it can be put there. So the shepherd's hooks and the things like that, if they're put at the end of the monument, then the mowing row is, is not bothered at all. I mean, they can go through there and mow quicker and then the weed eating is, is still the same amount of time. So we're, we're gonna try to work with people on an individual basis there. And Randall will show them, he'll put it where it needs to go. And if they're good with that, then we're done with that forever on that one right there. But it's gonna take a while to get everybody through the system there. And where there's just a temporary marker, that's in the mowing row. So if you need to put something there, as long as they can mow both sides of it, then they'll weed eat around it and, and go on. But those are few and far between. But I fully understand exactly what you're talking about. When you put that marker down, that's it.
Yeah, I mean.
And, and people don't want to get to that's it till they have to. I understand that.
She's just making her, her mind.
I, I fully understand.
Alright, thank you.
Well.
Thank you, good point. So we're basically saying nothing on the ground, period.
Nothing on the ground, but if, if they're good with taking something and putting it on the ground at the end of the marker where it doesn't slow the mowing down, that will be on an individual basis there. But the fewer things we have on the ground, the better.
I just think that thirty day needs to come out of the.
Yeah, and I think that was basically the decoration, but we need to take that completely out, so.
I just say that they'll be removed when mowing, prior to mowing.
Yeah, everybody can look at these, come up with a few changes and then we'll talk about next meeting.
And I say to, to, you know, to the public, if you have a general concern or a question, I think any of the five of us up here will, will be glad to listen to you. Any, any concern that you've got, and we'll, you know, we'll address that. Because we want, we want this to work with our citizens and with the city. So, you know, we, we, we know, we know both sides of the issue, so.
There was a shepherd hook that turned out to work really great for folks. They can hang, some of them are double, so you get two flowers on each side. That's what we recommend putting those everywhere, because we can still maintain those without problems when they put it at the end of the marker.
And that's something that might work on where you don't have a monument, where that little marker's at. If you put it right there, they can mow both sides and then just weed eat around it. So that may be an option that you could look at for that one.
Yeah, there's one family down there, they've got a birdbiter on theirs, so it's, it's versatile.
There's more people here for that, anybody else?
Yeah, anybody else want to address the?
Oh, here's a couple. I have a daughter there, she's been there for twelve years. Um, but I tell you, it's really a lot. We did decorate. I've never had an issue with it whatsoever. I do look at the big picture. Her stuff was removed. I didn't think nothing of it, I didn't complain. I figured it was for upkeep. My thing is, is there's people up there who do not think of flowers, of bays for decoration. I'm here for those people. I'm here for our veterans, because if they have a veteran monument, they don't have nowhere to put anything. So, you know, we're gonna have to, it's gonna have to come up on some type of neutral ground, on some of this. My kid is afraid of the dark. I do put solar lights up there. I go and I check on those. I keep a check on that. I clean it up, I remove them. But stuff like that is something that you see at cemeteries all over. You know, on the side of the monuments, I'm fine with that, a hundred percent. But some of this is veterans, flags, they don't have bases, nowhere to put that. You know, like y'all were saying, we buy the monuments or buy the plots. I highly suggest that something, you know, said, you know, hey, you might want to take this because we've got these situations. I've said, I pondered on this and pondered on it because I know y'all have, you know, what y'all have to do to, for the upkeep. I don't have a problem with it, like I said from the beginning, but it has to be a consistency. If you go up through there and look now, there are places where flowers are on the ground. And there's grass all around it, you know. And that's where us, we have to do our part. So with y'all's part's easier also. But, you know, my, my main thing is, you know, when you look at it, to take a big look at the big picture. Because it's not just, you know, me being affected. Maybe like on the removing the flowers, you know, thirty days, he can't walk around with a notebook and keep up with, hey, those flowers were put out on June tenth. You know, here it is July tenth, let's take them up. It's gonna have some type of like timeframe. The third week of the month, we're removing all flowers, you know, or everything on the ground. You know, it's something that a, a date or a deadline needs to be set or said.
I would, just the point you've made right now. If anybody here has got a recommendation or an idea or a thought, get it to the mayor and we got two weeks to look at all of those. And so if you've got some recommendations because you're there and you know what works and what doesn't, get that to the mayor as soon as you can and then he'll get it to all of us. And we've got that information to add with our personal knowledge. And we'll try to make this work one time. We, we really don't like to change the rules three or four times. We'd like to make this work and put it out for public comment before we adopt any new rules down there. So if you do that, that'd be helpful for us.
There's a lot of city manpower being like wasted just over a miscommunication thing.
Right.
I agree.
They're sitting here reporting flowers being stolen, so you've got them going down to the police department, extra patrol. And it's just, it's just a simple, something simple that couldn't, that, that can easily be resolved.
Right.
You know, and I ask that, you know, on, for us at the cemetery, on our, you know, part, you can't send out a mass letter because you might have somebody in Texas who bought this plot, their name's on it, but their family here.
Right.
And for pain is taking care of it, you know. Newspaper or something, you know, that, you know, that it's being done, that there are changes. You know, because if not, we're, it's gonna be a re-earthing problem.
Right.
And I don't want to continue to put, you know, my money or my decorations out there and, you know, them being moved and stuff like that, you know. But I'm not, I'm not here to rock, you know, I'm just here, you know, to tell, you know, what I've experienced. I've been there, this song, stuff comes up going, things be so, you know. But, you know, there's other, other people than just like the one with the marker. You know, if you go up there, one of the people that used to take care of it, the grave years ago, he don't have a headstone. He just has a flat, you know, marker. His family's gonna want to put, you know, flowers up there, you know, Father's Day, stuff like that. His stuff is, you know, gone. Father's Day, you know, my mother's, it was gone.
And, and hopefully the shepherd's hook will work on the flat markers. Or you can set something on a flat marker because it's not gonna be run over. It's mowed too. But we're, we're gonna try to work through all of that and we've discussed options for that. But the shepherd's hook seemed to be the answer to a lot of those issues because you can put it right by, you can put it there.
For twelve years and then it was moved.
Yeah.
I didn't call and complain. I figured it was something, you know, new going on, you know. But, you know, it's also our part that we have to keep an eye on our graves and pick up our own flowers. Because you got people that does take stuff up there and move them for months.
Right.
You know, and you can't do that.
Right.
You know, but I'm just asking, you know, like, maybe think of a, a timeframe or a date, you know, that, you know, everything's gonna be moved on this day we're doing the mass, you know.
Right.
But it's gotta be a consistency thing and that's what I'm asking. You know, if y'all are doing it for better upkeep, you can't have a bench two graves over and that grass is up underneath to the bottom of the bench.
Right.
So why did you take my flowers? Because evidently you want, you know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Another thing while she was talking is whatever we decide, I think we, maybe should communicate to the florist. Because I have cousins that call and just get flowers put on their mother's grave. Well, I've seen it, it's on the ground. So that's maybe something we can do as well.
Yeah, I think the communication and the education on all this stuff is gonna be key. So I think our media will do a good job of getting that out for us and letting us know, you know, what, what we expect as, as a city and what is to be expected of, of the citizens. Did anybody else?
I kind of fall in a category of all of the above. Because I take care of like eleven family members' graves. My husband died a year ago, so we still don't have a marker. I finally finished paying off his funeral, so the marker comes next. I take care of two great uncles and a great aunt's grave that don't have, you know, kids to take care of. But back in March and April, I had four different ones have flowers for me. Two of them were not, were in the bases attached to the monument. They weren't on the ground, they weren't a saddle, they were, I know it's awful as it sounds, duct tape, hook tape works on holding flowers. I even went to Randall and commented about it and he was like, oh no, we are not getting them out of the bases. I made the comment about duct tape. He said, oh, duct tape? Which, you know, that was, yeah, you know the grave. And I think since this has come up, that's probably gonna readdress that problem. One of the issues is what she just commented, our, our veterans. One of the great uncles has the marker that's above, the white marker. They should want to put the flowers in front of you and put the flag in front of them. You're proud of them, you're proud of their service and what they did for our country. We should honor them. And every time I put flowers out, not just this year, it's not that somebody's gotten off a boat, mowed, moved the flowers and put them back. It's let's just hit it and be done with it and then the next time we'll take it off the grave. And that has been the case. The older section, at that time, I don't think the bases were softer than the monuments. Back in those practices of that time, they had a little white basket of the flowers you said in front of the grave. And that's, I mean, not saying I'm young, but, you know, a lot of the old time thinking is that you want to go out there, you want to put your fresh flowers, you want to put flowers to honor your ancestors or, you know, in their remembrance. And it's just sad, the money that gets spent on those. And what occurred on mine was back in March and April, this wasn't even mowing season. And so come thirty days, I mean, I, I started hearing some comments. So thirty days after memorial, or after decoration, I started watching. Well, I went down there and snatched two of them off the grave that were on the ground, my husband's and then the bedroom's. Currently, all of the others are still remaining, which I hope they remain. And the issue about replacing the dirt, my husband still don't even have all any grass on his, on his grave. It took moms two years to get grass on their grave. Now, the ants had been here for a bit. I mean, they had a group of ant beds and, you know, I've addressed that with Randall or with whoever was up there at the time. But I agree, I mean, the suggestions, the thirty day deal, I thought, my husband's gonna have flowers on his grave. If I have to put a ribbon that says, what day did I put it out there, take picture of me for doing it, I'll come mow them in twenty-nine. I don't want to do that. That's not why I put flowers out there. I'm honoring my husband. And that's what I want. And that's what I want. But I'm gonna make sure it looks, it's not packed, and it's gonna look nice. And I, I mean, I love our cemetery, it's a great, right now, it don't look that terrific to me. I mean, it, I always think of this year after decoration, I thought, wow, this is really pretty this year, everybody put the extra effort. And then after I went up there, I thought, I've got it there and I just flowers off, I was, I mean, I took a picture, I thought, come on there, this looks, this just looks like a cold, old grave though, you know? As much money and as efforts we've put into it, I mean, as crazy as it sounds, we should be thoughtful of our cemeteries and what we do for them.
It was pretty plain this year after decoration, I, I agree with, I was disappointed, it's, it's usually just immaculate. But there's probably a third less flowers this year than there was last year. And I don't know if that's just the change in times, or economy, or what, but it was way less after decoration.
And I mean, and I can understand, you know, y'all were talking about the rags, everybody has a different opinion of rags, and old looking flowers, and, you know, something falling out. And even if I thought, you know, the area around my, my little, if I walked by, I know what flowers on there, if they're coming out, out comes a duct tape, I might tape it a little bit to keep it in there, or I'll go back and put it on your grave. But it's, you know, we, we do need to do something where it accommodates and it keeps, you know, bring honor to our cemetery and our, our family.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Okay, we have one more.
I didn't know I was gonna have to come up here in front of her, it'd be a little harder, but, um. My mother is, it's very recent that she was buried, and she's very well-known here. And we did get a little carried away about things, because we love her so much. And, uh, the thing that caused the upsetness was seeing two large, overfilled trucks with brand-new flowers backed up at the building. Now, that caused the upsetness, and things gone. And my sister, who is out of town on vacation, that was supposed to be here, she was there, and she confronted Brandon about everything. And she was emotional, I'm sure. But, he got emotional with her too. And said that the flowers were there because they were cleaning up, that he could get her a copy of the rules off of his desk, if she would like them. That we have a Shepherd's Hook up, and by the way, we had the bird gate, the bird brook. And, uh, because I promised my mom on that. And, uh, he said, I'm doing you a favor, letting you keep the Shepherd's Hook up there. And that was, that hurt my sister very bad, his tone about that. And I think that's what caused most of the upsetness. And then we were told that the flowers were in the back of the truck, and whoever wanted to go get them could. Or they could leave them there, and people could go through them and resell them if they liked. And that, when you put out all the money for those flowers, and you're told that, that people can go up there and resell them if they like, if nobody come and got them, before they took them to the cemetery, they would give them ample time to go up there and go through them and see if they would like them again. Now that, uh, there was a lot of people upset about that. And, um, I think everybody does well, the cemetery is beautiful. I used to ride my mother up there before she passed away, just to look, she just wanted to see where she would be and tell us what she would like. And she has a very small stone, we don't have any bases, because we had, actually, yes, there's signs in the cemetery, but to tell the truth, I don't think you may stop really and read those to see what are the rules in the cemetery, and maybe we should. But, you're just thinking that it's something like the hours are, this and that, you're not being taught. I mean, we aren't looking for, we're gonna throw everything away every 30 days. And we were strictly told that, they will be gone in 30 days, and I don't care who likes it, who wants it, who doesn't. This cemetery hasn't been maintained the way it's supposed to, and it's going to now. That would be impossible, like everybody's already said, that, to do that in a 30-day timeframe. I was up there, and a lady, an old, a very old lady came in, I had stopped at the truck. And she said, I wonder if my flowers are in there, my son just passed away, and I just put them on there the other day. I just laid them down, and, and that was so sad, it just broke my heart. And, uh, we, because my mother's stone is small and flat, we had no idea how to pick a stone and get the bases on it and everything. We just, we didn't know about all this, and you know what, you don't know a lot of things till the time comes. So you're kind of penalized because you did not know, but you still want to show love to your loved one. And so that's very hard. You, you men, you're not prepared for all this, and you're trying, we're practically trying to figure out ways that we won't have our flowers thrown away. And my sister goes every day to see my mom. And she is just brokenhearted, she hasn't been there in a couple of weeks, and she's just brokenhearted beside herself, because of all of this. And, uh, and I, I did say, I felt like Randall, he, my sister was emotional, so he got emotional. But I do think that he do, does a good job. But I think he was a little firmer than what he needed to be that particular day, when our mother had just been buried, and my sister was very upset. I think this comes with the territory, you're gonna have to deal with people that are in an emotional state sometimes, when it's very recent. And so, I do understand, I feel sorry for him, because I know he caught a lot of flak. And hopefully, we can all work through this. But families have got to be, this is a thing where families have got to be considered, and we got to figure out things that they're right and put for everybody.
We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, we're gonna move right along with our agenda. Discussion about doing drainage and dirt work on Eddie Dawson's property on Lincoln Avenue South.
Well, look, the very last page in your package, you've got a map, a print off the GIS and fuel oil unit, north at the top. I circled a property that I think is in question, ten, if you wanna look at, might be Larry's, make sure I correct him. Eddie's house is at the south side of Lincoln, south side of 11th Street.
This property belongs to Land Hughes Estate, Eddie on property on this side, and some on that side.
So basically, it's a, uh, drainage across the road. And what he's wanting to do is use it to, he wanted to, he wanted to buy the pipe and let us put it in.
Is it on private property?
It, well, no, I can't say that it is, because of the right of way.
It's public property.
I said, I, I, it's Lincoln Avenue, it's probably, I don't know if the odds were you, it's probably on the white right of way. Because that road's fairly narrow at that point. But the only, the only purpose of this is to be able to run a bulldozer.
So it's no public benefit other than to Mr. Dawson? I, I don't think we can legally do that. We've done some work down there to pass into the road. She'll meet Tim, what's he talking about there?
He wants to extend that pipe.
This, we've got a crockery in here, man.
Oh, that, up on the private property?
Right.
Oh, no, we can't do that. A private property, okay. No, we can't do that. There's no benefit to the public from doing that, if that was keeping the road from flooding or something like that, that'd be good. But we can't do it on private property that's not to benefit Tim.
That being a drainage issue there for the road, and that'd be something, even if he does it himself, then Tim would have to be involved in where he connects.
He's on, he's working on our road, yeah, absolutely, he doesn't need to be doing anything to our street.
If he wants to buy a pipe and put it in himself, we're good with that, but you need to coordinate how he hooks to our pipe.
Right, yeah.
I'm good with that, but I don't think we can do anything else.
Yeah, I don't think.
Well, it's, you know, it's, it's not within the city's policy to, you know, but us to go to expense, put a pipe on.
Well, we, we've had numerous things like this, we particularly had some, several years ago, we had, uh, the old paint property had a drainage ditch on it that was a problem. And they had, they had asked the city to put a pipe in it, and we, we'd indicated to them that we couldn't do it. So that, to be consistent with what we've always done, and consistent with the law, we're not, we're not able to put that in.
All right, Mayor, you have a report for us?
Uh, just two or three things. Uh, you know, we applied for, uh, with the Department of Transportation for the Road and Bridge Fund money to help with the Valley Joyce Project down on Jordan Lane. Uh, the project was six hundred and fifty-something thousand dollars. Uh, we got the state, uh, to agree to let us do the work, give us a check, and take out of it. And they agreed to do it, believe it or not. So, we got, we're getting and have got a funded agreement yet, but we got the letter saying they had allocated $277,100 to that project. That will come close to paying for the material, and then Tim did the work. So it's still, uh, it's, well, the boy that came up here, he said, we just don't do that, what they did this time. That'll be something, we'll be getting started not too awfully long from now. Uh, I would, uh, we, you remember when we built those, or had the apartments built up there on Hickson Road? We talked about widening the road and doing this sort of thing. Uh, I would ask Wade and Red to bring that up at the water company, see about moving that line, because we don't need to do any roadwork until that line is, is moved. And we'd like to get the roadwork done and let it set for a year or so before we paint it. Got a letter from TVA the other day. Uh, you know, we're, the power company's planning on putting a new substation out on the south end. Well, TVA's gotta do the line, transmission lines to it, so they're having an open house at the Cold and Iron Building on July the 18th, from 3:00 to 7:00, for any comments from anybody that would have, they'll have the location and route and everything. Anybody has any suggestions or com, or complaints, uh, that'd be a good time to do it. Uh, it, it, well, it's public, but I wouldn't call it a public hearing. July the 18th, between 3:00 and 7:00. They have similar things throughout the state from time to time, if they've got a project going, you know, or scheduled or something, they'll, they'll put some flitter here up. They just had one out at Northeast concerning their, their five-year program. And people come, look, see. We're getting close, I think, to the, uh, being ready to bid the, the north section of the sewer plant. We know for certain any dates on that yet.
Uh, you're talking about the sewer line expansion?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Sometime in July?
It should be, it should be cut it up before long anyway. That's, that's about it right now.
With regard to that sewer line, I'm gonna send all of your list of landowners, and if there's any of them that you feel it would be good for you to talk to about signing the easements, then, then speed it along.
How many we like having them signed?
There are.
I mean, we don't have any of them, I know we got verbal commitments from everybody.
We've got verbal commitments for those all came about two years ago. So everybody I talked to's wanting us, want to come back and show me again exactly what you're gonna do, or something. That's, that's exact, now that we, that's right, now that, now that we have the line, they wanna talk about it again, so.
You gonna send out everybody, send a list to us, or?
Yeah, send you a list, if there's any that you wanna pick out to talk to, uh, I'll get you that easement to you. If, uh, if there's people that no, none of us, none of y'all are comfortable, then we'll go, we'll go see them. But, uh, I figured it saves money for y'all to do what it's supposed to be.
So, you got it, Mayor? All right, I would like to, to recognize, uh, our new Times Journal owner, Patrick Graham, this is his first time to, to a meeting. We, we appreciate you coming out and being with us today, Patrick.
Thank you.
We, uh, like the fact that you, you come and, uh, and be here, be part of us, so.
Glad to be here.
We appreciate it. Yeah.
Thank you.
We also wanna recognize our Livingstone Ministries School. If you guys would stand, uh, really appreciate them coming and, and being part of our council meetings, uh, every, every week. And tell you a little story, last, last council meeting, uh, that we canceled, uh, one of these, the students was getting dressed that morning, and she was ready to come to a council meeting, the first time that she's gonna get to be at a council meeting. And we had to cancel, we canceled the meeting that day. So, I felt really bad that, that she was really looking forward to being here, but we're gonna get her here, and, uh, we're gonna, uh... Actually, I, I, I'm, I'm working on, uh, giving the school a tour of City Hall. So, I'm gonna bring them in and, and give them a tour one day, uh, all of them that wanna come and, and take them behind the scenes. So, we appreciate you guys coming.
They're really interested in what we do, I was just gonna say, I spoke to them last week. And, um, so they sent me a list of questions, and I, well, before I was like, oh, okay, it'll be all right. And then they sent me a list of questions, I was like, oh my gosh, these kids are really thinking deep. So, uh, I enjoyed it, though, they, they were great, and it's great that you guys are so interested, and thanks for coming. I said, let me ask.
Is there anybody else that wants to address the council?
I just have a question. Um, last year, Livingstone provided school supplies for, for some of the children in the Fort Payne City schools. And a few months ago, you passed this big amount of money for school supplies. So was that like for classroom books and things that the teachers have? Or are, are the city schools now gonna provide the pencils and the crayons and all that thing on the big list that they have out at Walmart every year?
The, the school is supposed to provide that with the 150,000 that we gave. Uh, the 50,000 that we give goes to the teachers for supplies in their classroom, but the 150 goes to supply the, the students with stuff that, they don't have to have those lists.
Okay, so then there won't be any lists in Walmart?
No lists.
And I, that was confirmed at the last school board meeting last week.
I just wanted to make sure, so we knew where we're going, thanks.
Thank you. All right, anybody else? Do we have a motion to go into? Got a motion to go into executive session, got a second, all in favor? Yes?
Yes.